We'll call the meeting to order. Turn my microphone on. This is reconvening our May eighth meeting. Purpose of today's meeting is to discuss the budget. I guess we've had one, two, three, we've had four weeks now to digest the county manager's recommended budget. And we're here to discuss that budget, ask questions. And I think we have it on our schedule to meet with the Board of Education at 5:00 P.M. So we have two hours to hash through it. Commissioner Gillespie is on a work emergency. He said he would be here as quick as he could.
They're not coming till five?
In five, yeah. Not suggesting-
They may be in hands drawn about the three o'clock suggestion because they may have, they may have noticed a recess till five o'clock.
No, some of the school board members didn't make it either.
Is right, Derek.
Thanks, no, no, yeah, not everybody, and not everybody could be here. We sent it out as a recommendation yesterday and then, you know, trying to do it all, we had realized that some will not be available until five o'clock. So like Chairman said, so. Yeah, just couldn't make it happen quick enough, basically.
Right.
With a less than a day's notice, so. So anyway, they're on schedule for five. They may be here a little bit earlier, so we'll roll a little bit early. So with that being said, any questions, I'll be happy to lead off if y'all want me to, unless somebody would like to take the floor. Okay, Derek. I'm gonna, you've already answered these questions, but I want to do it just for purpose of public record. The questions that I had emailed you regarding our budget, we'll just run through them one by one. Let's start with, some of these, my questions are referring to education, so we'll hold on those until we meet with education. Can you provide us an update with solid waste? I know that we've had some discussions in the past and we've mentioned that all of our recycling solid waste centers are front line. In other words, that's something that basically every member of the community visits probably at least once a week. And there's some of them that could obviously use some enhancements. I mean, I know I get, whenever the weather gets bad, they're weekly or daily, I get emails about potholes and we had done, we get complaints during holiday times when the centers aren't open about trash and, but I was thinking that now that the, uh, phase three of the landfill is completed, that hopefully solid waste finances will start to plane out and we can start taking some of those funds and placing them into improvements, aesthetic enhancements and functional enhancements to our solid waste departments.
And with that, Mr. Chairman, $300,000 has been placed in the solid waste budget, which will go towards, will prioritize those needs at the convenience center. I think solid waste is gonna go and, and take an inventory, listing those needs in priority, and that $300,000 will go towards correcting those highest priority functional issues at the-
That doesn't come from our, that's not coming out of our budget.
That's in the enterprise fund.
That's in the enterprise fund.
Correct, yes, sir.
So, just got any questions on that?
Just make sure that hails on it, 'cause they've got, they've got some serious safety issues.
Yes.
Roads tied up for safety over there.
And with that comment, is there a solution, or who, who helps with that solution of the problem?
It's Chris.
Chris, that's his baby.
Does he need to let us know what the solution is?
They'll let, they'll let me know over and out, hey.
Okay. Have they, have they, what is the solution?
They just need some permanent handrails. They've got ropes up for temporary handrails and some different elevations, but I'm sure Chris is aware of them, they've, they've been calling him. But I hope when they do this assessment that they, they identify safety issues apparently. Appearance is great, but safety issues are paramount.
I, I'll make this comment in jest. I'm not serious. And one of the reasons is because I have several friends that are commissioners in Raven County, but it wears me out when you go to their recycling centers. They're nice, yeah.
I Jackson County.
Jackson's not open Sunday, is it? Shouldn't use it much, so I-
All right, one of my questions was, under special appropriations, what is the S.T. of Franklin? I've got your answer here, but I'll let you respond.
Right, that is the state of Franklin. It's basically a seven county partnership in the southwest region here that assists with low income unemployed persons who are 55 years or older by training them in part-time community service assignments and assisting them in developing their skills to facilitate, to facilitate a transition to unsubsidized employment. I know that those volunteers, they have, they have worked at the senior center and places like that and assisted with our county staff in that capacity.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, just, just because I don't, I don't know, and I know this has been in our budget, I believe, every year since I've been a commissioner and it just rolls right through. Is there a reason that it's not put in to our community funding pool? Is there a reason it's separate? Does every county in the west do that, or just us, or do you know?
I couldn't speak to it. If every county in the west does it, I know that this was something that upon my first year here, it was in, it was in the budget. And we did look at it, did do some research on it and saw where that it had, you know, benefited county departments and benefited, again, this age group that are transitioning to unsubsidized employment. It very well, that is a topic for conversation that this board could have, and I would be more than willing to facilitate getting some representatives from, from the state of Franklin in here to address this board and answer any questions you might have. But there, you know, it, it could be a candidate for the community funding pool.
I, I don't, I don't have it written down there. What's that amount off the top of your-
Uh, $14,000.
$14,000. Gentlemen, y'all. Ronnie, Paul, any one of-
It's been in the budget ever since I've been here. I know for a fact that four counties contribute, or did, I, I assume they still do.
Yeah, I don't know the history. I don't know, I know it just kind of rolls through our budget every year, I'm just, yeah, just questioning.
And they combined that, and part of it went through the workshop in Silver. And that, and, uh, I don't know, I don't know how, a little research to it and heard on that, Derek. If they're still, even still doing that.
That may be a good thing, funding vote.
I want you-
Jack Horton.
Yeah, I think he's the chair of that board.
He's affiliate with that, yeah.
Yeah, Jack's on that board, I think.
He's the chairman.
Jack, he's chairman of the board now.
Okay.
Okay.
I know they're involved in transportation projects, too. We've got a contract with them on, on the veterans' transportation program that we did. They apparently do transportation in Swain County.
I'm just not familiar with them. Yeah, I think a quick update might be a good, could be good to see Jack anyway, become business, yeah. Chester and I just, maybe, well, I was gonna talk about Southmaking, but let's hold on that till the Board of Education's here. I team capital for schools, recycling center. Here is one that I think is worthy of some significant discussion. As personally as the owner of a rather large employer, I am, I have a lot of employees, and I think it's tough on us in this recommended budget, I'm not trying to pick on you, Derek, because I know you're doing what you can within your meets and bounds, but I think it's tough on us when we're asking our county employees overall. We're giving them basically two hits this year. One is, is that we're not giving them a cost of living increase, but yet, there's a lot of things in our everyday lives that are going up right now. And then number two is we're giving them a hit on their health insurance by asking them to, to give a contrib, a greater contribution of what they have in the past. Now, we all understand the reasons for that, both reasons for the lack of cost of living increase and why you're having to recommend your budget is flat, Derek, but as a leader, I don't feel, I don't feel great about it. If I was working as a county employee right now, I would be happy about it. Well, here, with basically two to three months' notice, I'm finding out that all of a sudden I'm potentially gonna have to be pulling another $200 a month if I stay on the same plan that I had last year out of my paycheck. When I'm making, when I worked for the county, I made $13 an hour. And if I was making that right now and then had to come up with $200, I'm gonna have to make a severe decision in my life. Either I'm gonna have to make some major changes just to make my day-to-day means meet, or I'm gonna have to really change my plan. Well, if my family's not capable of that, if my family's healthy and doing great, that's one thing. If I've got something going on and I'm, it really concerns me, it would wear me out. So I could just see, as a county employee, and we're part leaders of that, as well as Derek, is, is how do we handle that? And I've, I've been pondering it probably more than any other topic on, in this budget. And I've, I've got three thoughts on it. Number one, again, I'm, I'm just one, if all of y'all are in agreement, number one is, is we can task Derek with going back through the budget again as he sees our sales tax revenues are coming in, collection rates, how expenditures are being spent to try and find some money so that we can afford one or the other. The other idea that I had is we could potentially fund the difference in health insurance for this year, and at least that gives our county employees a year to digest the increase that they're getting ready to have. And then, you know, the third option is that we try and figure out how to handle a COLA increase, 'cause that obviously wouldn't, wouldn't handle all of the increase in health insurance, but at least it handles a portion of it. But anyway, I don't know if any of y'all have been pondering that issue, too, but it just hasn't been sitting extremely well for me. So, we're in the service industry. It's not like we sell a product. We provide a service, and I think we need to take care of the assets that we have, and their assets are our county employees. And I'm proud of what we have here and just hope we can continue to take care of them. So if y'all have any thoughts on that, I'm ready to talk about it.
We, Derek and I have had that conversation, Mr. Chairman, and very same conversation. And if you compare the insurance cost to the cost of living increase, first of all, the cost of living increase, we pretty much know what that reoccurring cost will be. Next year, we don't know, nobody has a clue what the cost of insurance will be. So if you, what I was looking for a way, if, and Derek had some ideas on that, if you could go down, and I don't know how you could do it, but if you go down, and if you could split that difference somehow, one's reoccurring, we know. And the insurance cost, you know, if we have another year like this year-
Yeah, I understand. We weren't expecting this year, so.
Rates aren't gonna go down.
You know, it's gotta go down some.
Insurance rates aren't gonna go down.
No, they're not.
They're only gonna continue to go up.
So if, if we face the same problem next year, here we are again, do we try to match it again? So do we put it in form of a policy? Is it a policy decision? Or do we take it, or do we have to look at it year by year? I mean, if we don't know what the cost of insurance is gonna be, we can tell you, but in our business insurance, one, two, three can tell you, we don't know what our business insurance is gonna be.
It's a lot of money.
It's, ours is higher.
I don't, you know, we couldn't have got lucky like the town of Highlands this year, who had a $300,000 decrease. And I believe the town of Franklin's went down as well.
But Highlands, they don't subsidize the dependent coverage, right?
They do.
They do? I thought they did away with that a couple of years ago.
They talked about it.
Similar policy as ours, yeah.
Did they, did that decrease happen because they, both of those joined the league, the municipalities?
Yeah.
Do we know what the cost of living would be?
We looked at the league as an option, but they wouldn't bid.
Yeah.
They refused to bid.
Derek, if you've got a handle on the cost of living, do we know?
Cost of living increase would be about $400,000 for two percent.
If we do a two percent. But is that the true cost of living, do we know that?
No, well, it won't be rec, this, you know, there, there are some municipalities out there that are, that are going with two percent. I think the Social Security Administration in, um, seventeen, eighteen, recommended two percent. The eighteen, nineteen cost of living increase for the Social Security Administration, I don't think gets released until maybe the beginning of effective fiscal year.
It's not out yet, is it? We should go with two percent, it's $400,000.
Two percent's $400,000.
Would the cost of living take care of the expenses that they're gonna have monthly, extra?
Well, it just depends on how you look at it. Like, right now, if you have enhanced family coverage and you switch to base coverage, which I think we had about, there were quite a few that had family coverage and switched to, on the eighty-twenty, the enhanced level, and then switched to that base plan, they're actually saving $10 a month on, on health insurance. But now, like me, I was on the base family coverage before and stayed on the base family coverage, so that is a, you know, about a fifty to $160 increase a month in, in the insurance coverage.
I mean, your choice is to take lower coverage and, and more, or pay, pay more, basically.
Well, obviously, and I don't mean to, but obviously, yes, you can switch into the base plan and save you money on premium costs, but of course, you're simply, you're, you're moving your exposure to-
That's right.
-a higher deductible, more out of pocket. So it's, I mean, it's a, it's a roll the dice either way.
And, and this was a tough, and like you said, Mr. Chairman, this is the toughest decision, you know, the insurance committee struggled with this, but, you know, looking at the parameters that we had and the renewal increases we received, again, at twenty-four percent, that was, you know, the next closest one was thirty-six percent increase. And so that twenty-four percent, which equated to about $750,000, we were able to absorb half a million dollars of that. And again, our health insurance is like an enterprise fund. It's set up like a business fund. So, you know, it needs to, it is very important that that account, that, that fund stand on its own merit, that, that the revenues coming into that fund are going to support the expenditures that are occurring in that fund without subsidy, without subsidy. That it needs to be, it needs to, to stand on its own. And that was one of the, that was the toughest issue in this budget to deal with. Now, we have made some concessions on, like the employee health clinic, for instance. We're, we're expanding our services there. We're talking right now about opening it up to, offering it to direct relatives that are not dependents, but are your direct relative, that they will be able to go. We're stepping up our disease management and trying to get those, those people with chronic illnesses in, in consulting with a disease management professional via the Health Department in Blue Cross Blue Shield for the first time. We had them sit down at the table together and they were able to discuss a plan that will involve the insurance company and our employee health clinic that takes advantage of, of these things like disease management and our health clinic and controlling costs through that mechanism. All right, I'll reiterate, but I said earlier, 'cause I feel like I'm beating on you, and that's not my intention, Derek. Based upon what we were working with this year, I think you've done an outstanding job on trying to be together when I can tear through that budget and only find just a, literally just a few questions of what's going on. And, you know, when you look back at last year and the year before, and you watch where we're going and where the county's been going, we, we wanna see things run efficiently. It's, it's just running efficiently, you know, where the, to the, where the string is twanging like a banjo now.
Right, right.
It's not strumming, so. So kudos to you for, for doing that. But at the same time, I think we're gonna have to consider, based upon our discussions in a few minutes with Board of Education, how we're gonna handle some upcoming issues with them, as well as how we handle our county employees, so.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the insurance thing, Derek, and you talked to the Blue Cross people in Wally.
Yes.
And they said, "We're sorry," but yet they had the most lucrative quarters and get me. I get confused.
I did, I, you know, and I do, too. You know, they were, they had a, an interview from WLOS, an interview and, and just asked what I thought about it. And I mean, it's, you just can't make it up. It's, uh, it's, it's a tragedy, really, that, that this is where it's going. And until, you know, just like I, I stated in the budget message, until, right now, I think everybody in this country is searching for the new normal in terms of health insurance. What is the new normal? Used to, everybody, everybody had health insurance, we took it for granted. But now, with, with the changes and the things that are happening on the national level, we have, we have no choice. As we, you know, we're only as good as the price as we get back to transition and ebb and flow with these changes. Until that new normal is found and we can then have a number to, to budget consistently with. But with the fluctuations in, in these costs all across the country, we just have no choice but to, but to try to stay on the ball as best as we can until, until there's some reconciliation at a national level in terms of health insurance and how those costs are gonna be controlled.
Mr. Chairman, their board, you know, as long as we're self-funded, that's always the risk that we're going to have.
Sure.
And we have had two historically bad, back-to-back claims years, and we're seeing the effect of that, and there's just no way around it. And if we tried to go and become fully insured, where we simply pay a premium and walk away, we're looking at more money than we're talking about now.
And, and I-
Yeah, sure, a lot more.
And I know, I know that you all have heard me say this before, but in this budget, you'll notice a $290,000 contribution into the Health Insurance Reserve Fund.
Correct.
And we have tried to do, we have increased that contribution year after year in an effort to, again, try to build that Health Insurance Reserve Fund up to a sustainable level. In 2008, that fund had $6 million in it, the reserve fund. So when you have, when you have that money in there and you have a blip like this on a claims year, you rely on that fund. But, you know, as I stated, and, and I've talked about insurance in each budget message that I've ever done, and if you go back and look at fourteen, fifteen, from 2008 through 2014, that, that, that Health Insurance Reserve Fund decreased by 94 percent. We were hitting it on average $850,000 a year for that time period, year after year after year, because our claims were exceeding, the, our claims and expenses associated with that account were exceeding the revenues that we were putting into it. And so immediately after we made these changes, you know, we started on our, when we made the changes and went to our two-tiered plan structure, went with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we were starting with nothing in that reserve fund. So we've started literally at ground zero, but have made a good faith effort and will continue to make a good faith effort to try to build that fund. But in order to do that, we're gonna have to have, we're gonna have to catch a break or two and, and on some claims years to allow us to begin, again, building that fund back from nothing. And so, you know, I just wanted to highlight that to say that there is about a $290,000 contribution to that Health Insurance Reserve Fund, again, to try to help move that in the right direction, where when we have a year like this, we, we rely on that reserve fund, get through the year and move on without having to pass these costs down. But when we get these increases, we no longer have that reserve fund to rely upon. So we have no choice but to absorb the cost in their entirety in the operating budget.
At the six months, we're right now six months in, you know, starting in July, when we get six months into the new budget, could you look back and, Mr. Decker, and see if we're gonna have another tough year like we're having this year? It's hard to tell, isn't it?
It's, it's hard to tell, but you usually get a sense of it fairly early on, but-
But it's really hard.
It could blow up, it could blow up again.
It'll blow up, it'll blow up to the end of the year this year.
It blows up, yeah. It could, it could go further apart in the next four weeks.
And like Derek said, we're, you know, we ended last year with like ninety-seven thousand, I think it was, in that reserve, and we're paying out five, five and a half million a year. And so, you know, even if we have a good claims year, we need that money, as wood on the porch, as Mike Norris likes to say, to start building that reserve fund-
Back to it.
-you know, back to a level so that when we have bad claims years, we can fall back and use a little bit of that instead of having to pass along the increases.
Right.
And like Derek said, with this current budget year, we budgeted $261,802. I've already transferred that over, but I'm probably gonna need another $500,000 to $600,000 just so that the funds, you know, not broke at June 30.
Stay solid.
Pardon?
To stay where you at and stay solid.
Yeah.
Stay solid.
And so hopefully, the $280,000 we budgeted for next year will be good here and we can actually let that roll into that reserve and again start, it's just gonna take time, you know. Like Derek said, we started off with basically nothing and we've worked hard to try to get that, but we've been hit with two years in a row where we just can't seem to get ahead, you know, of the claims, so. It's, it's gonna take many, many years, you know, and then they-
To catch it.
-to catch up, and we may have to consider, you know, one-time infusions into the fund or something at a later point, you know, there's just, there's no easy fix to it, you know. It's not gonna happen overnight, so.
Not to mention if, with just the regular increases, you don't know what-
Yeah, just a normal medical increase. As you look at medical trends for, you know, you know, procedures and prescriptions, then that's always there.
Usually by seven, eight percent.
Seven, eight percent, just medical trends, so.
If you have a good claims year, does that decrease the cost, or does it take two or three years of good claim years before you'll see the benefit of it?
It'd be a couple of years, 'cause they look back at a, you know, probably a two- to three-year history of what their claims were.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Is the health clinic utilized better well?
Health clinic utilization is increasing, and it has been increasing steadily. We expect it, you know, with the, our new services, for instance, you know, if you have labs, and this is what we tried to, to get out during our employee meetings, the Health Department can do 90 percent of the labs that you need done, unless it's some kind of specialized lab. So by the employee getting the doctor to write those labs and taking those labs to the Health Department, the Health Department, it's a straight cost. They don't bill the insurance company. So that's not showing up. Like, if you're, if we have an employee get cut at work, the Health Department is now doing sutures and, you know, butterfly staples, stuff like that. So rather than going to the emergency room if it, if it is not, now, this is assuming it's a, you know, you cut your hand or cut your arm, you can get that stitched up at the health clinic. And again, that cost does not get billed to the insurance company. That cost is directly absorbed by the Health Department. And the, right now, with those new things like that, we hope as employees start going there or continue going there and becoming more familiar with it, that it's gonna have an impact on our health insurance. But, but we have seen increase in the utilization of the health clinic, and the Health Department has done an outstanding job in getting that clinic where it, where it is today.
And it's a zero co-pay for employees and their dependents.
And for prescription, it's, I think it's-
It's like one to three dollars or something, depending on what you get.
Or was it, did they change it to zero this year?
Okay, one to-
One to three, okay. So it's-
But, yeah, if you've got a sore throat, think you have strep, you can go to the Employee Health Clinic, they'll test you and it's zero co-pay, you know.
And they go along with the other family members or just employees?
Yeah, dependents.
Right now, the employees and dependents.
Spouses, children.
Carl, just to bring you up to speed, we're discussing the hits on county employees this year, permitting, you know, without a, without a COLA and the head on health insurance. No, no, no follow minds, let everybody know your truck needed washed.
No, just kidding.
No, you'd be here today. So, you know, we're just going through questions. We just wrapped mine up. I think that's all I had besides education questions. Anyone else? Commissioner Shields, anything for Derek?
I think you're gonna hit on, when you hit the school.
Hit the schools.
I think she'll be on the schools.
Anything else?
Back to the employee thing, Mr. Decker, I just throw this out for discussion.
Sure.
You know, what I would, we're gonna be talking when we get to schools, when we get to, my, Mr. Shields' recommendation to this board, we're gonna be talking about some other reoccurring expenses and getting our fund balance. We're gonna be talking about some other reoccurring expenses and getting our fund balance uh some and hoping that with the hope that our sales tax revenue that we don't we have coming is gonna backfill some, but I just wonder how the board would feel about a one percent cost of living to our employees. And then at Christmas, we don't we always give a one percent, Derek? Yes, at Christmas, and I know that that's not, that is a two percent increase overall, really and truly. And I know that that's not a whole lot and I know that that two hundred thousand will be coming out of our fund balance and it is reoccurring. But hopefully that with the sales tax and hopefully we have a good insurance year, that that won't hit our fund balance on reoccurring year after year with that hope. I just throw that out there for discussion and that would be it. And that one percent would be a huge help to to those employees making thirty-five thousand dollars a year, Derek. I mean, you can speak to that. You could do the numbers quickly, but
Yes, Lori, did you get a, I hate to put you on the spot, did you get an updated uh number on that cap on that uh space needs analysis that they ever sent you one?
They did send it, but I don't remember what it is. It was about two hundred maybe.
Okay. See, and I I was thinking as we as as you as we nail down pricing on things like that, I asked Lori about that space needs analysis. We had three hundred thousand.
Budgeted for that.
Budgeted for that. It's come back to two hundred thousand. So right there to a hundred thousand um just in receiving the pricing information back. Um you know, we were said, we were told it would be anywhere from a hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand. We budgeted on the high end, three hundred thousand um just out of uncertainty. So you know, it could be possible that uh you know, looking at some stuff like that, if if some other we get some favorable pricing on some other things, I know that we had some pricing coming back for our uh some of our tower projects and things like that. Um you know, if the pricing comes in lower, we could be able to get together a one percent out of the budget without having to rely on 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 hitting the fund balance for that, but that would
Didn't if we had to hit it to live, the smarter we had to hit it would be best, of course. But I mean, that would be better than if you hit it for the full amount and expecting things you don't know what's gonna become to backfill it.
Well, and it's six half a dozen. If you hit it for the full amount, whatever savings you realize on this pricing, you're gonna accrue that through the year and it's just transferring it back in the year end. So it's, you know, it's six half a dozen.
But that is something for discussion.
No, you're right, I mean, yeah. I wouldn't have brought it up, I didn't think we need to do something. Uh so Derek, Lori, I'm just rough numbers off the top of my head. A two percent is four hundred and fifty thousand recurring.
About four hundred.
Four hundred, so a one percent would be two two hundred roughly. So you're what you're suggesting is that would come out of fund balance and
Well, I'm I'm just saying in this weekend
There's potentially a hundred thousand to be held.
Yeah, just keep in mind though, keep in mind when you start talking about using capital money that we've got kinda earmarked for CIP. Once you put that in operation, it's gone.
That's right.
So that's a hundred thousand less going toward next year's CIP.
We know that.
You know, so just keep that in mind moving forward through all this. And like I said, hopefully with sales tax, we'll gain, you know, because we budget conservatively, but we did budget three percent growth this year when we've normally been leaning towards two. Um so
Paying my fair share.
It's just a volatile source of revenue, you know.
But it's looking pretty good.
It's looking good, yeah.
It's looking, I mean, but everything we saw, the numbers we saw are looking really good.
Oh, yeah, it is.
So that's one reason that we can have the discussion, not only this, but with the school coming up, so.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to a one percent discussion item, but I am, I'm nervous about starting to use our fund balance, which I've advocated for years, is in excess, twenty-two million dollar fund balance sitting there. When we start using that to fund these reoccurring expenses, I don't think it reflects good management skills on this board. That's not the purpose of a uh fund balance.
Agreed.
So it's either
That's our seat, that is our seat point.
Pardon?
That's our seat point.
That's our sush fund is the best word we use for it, but I don't think it reflects good on our management skills if if we're if if we wanna keep increasing the budget with re- reoccurring funds, then the way to handle that is tax increase. You know, to bring in the revenues to offset expenditures. So that's that's my take on it.
Carl, comments? Commissioner Shields?
Uh Mr. Higginson mentioned something there. What where's the line in your fund balance? You you let's say you spend your fund balance down to a point, then you have to activate a tax increase. Where where does that come down to before? Say, okay, I don't know.
Anywhere. It's whatever we said at that.
Think the state requires us to have
They don't require it, they suggest.
Eight percent.
Eight percent or a month.
They will come to your house in eight percent.
Yeah, they will come run your government.
They'll come to your house in eight percent.
They will come run your county government.
But we're forty, we're forty something percent.
And I think it's important to note here, when you look at smaller counties, um less than, you know, forty thousand population, they typically have a higher fund balance because they typically have a smaller budget. Um you know, eight percent of of Mecklenburg County's budget, that's gonna be a huge number. Uh whereas, you know, when you look at our budget and you look at the median out here for these other smaller counties, it's typically around thirty-six percent in in your fund balance is what you see across the state of Mecklenburg.
So I just heard that we got forty-eight percent.
We got about forty-four.
Forty-four.
And so we'd have to use a percentage point to spin it down to, then breaks come on and back.
We've always, well, what a board many, many years ago, twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent, yeah.
Many years ago.
That's what Davenport suggested too.
Yep. Eight percent is one month expenses approximately for your account. You have to also understand that your cost of borrowing money is going to be affected
Be impacted by your fund balance.
By how much fund balance you do or don't have.
And the use of it.
And your and your uh, yeah, what's your credit?
If you if you're using it for one-time capital, you know, like if we've got a smaller capital project instead of the one and taking a loan, we take it out of fund balance, you can explain that to the grading agencies, you know, and it makes sense to them. You know, that you're using it for one-time capital purpose and not recurring operating expenses, so you have to be careful there.
I think our fund balance was about a billion dollars a year over the last four years.
Uh we pulled that up. I have a slide. Right here.
Kind of heard the theory that the reason it does is because we're so conservative, but I take issue with that.
Right here, uh. Let's see here. So fifteen, sixteen, twenty-one point eight, uh sixteen, seventeen, and that's audited. Twenty-two point two. And then seventeen, eighteen projected is twenty-two point four.
But fourteen, fifteen is eighteen, in that audited amount too.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it grew over three million, but I'm thinking fourteen, fifteen had some receivables that were not a normal trend. You gotta keep that in mind when you're looking at fund balance.
For example, so what would you be receiving that?
Just maybe grant funds. It might be something that the county had to expend, but by the time revenue recognition is cut off at September thirtieth, so if there were grant funds that we had drawn down but not received by September thirtieth, those would be receivables. You can't count those as usable fund balance.
I guess I'm kinda listening from the experience of the group for the bill to go off, it says as as far as you can go. Uh and and anything below that, you you can put in the situation. And I understand recurring stuff can eat up uh fund balance in a hurry if you get that situation.
You go back through the recession years, if you'll go back to two thousand and seven, eight, nine, ten, everything was going good, then we had to really dip into it to keep them ready to pass through. So it takes a while to build it back up.
Paul just rolling, rolling with your thought there and thinking about um what you're saying, you you could potentially, you know, we we just passed where we're gonna finance the improvements to South Macon, so, yep, help me out, three million, two and a half?
Right at three million.
Okay, three million. So you could, you know, that's in our budget this year, the payments. It's a hundred and sixty-something thousand in this year's budget. Next year it's gonna be three hundred and something thousand. You could potentially pay that. We've already got the ball rolling on that, so we've already got some expenses into financing it, but you could potentially pay for that out of fund balance and then that opens that much more up into the budget. So it's sort of a catch, a catch twenty-two when you look at it that that way too, so. But I think it's something this board needs to discuss too.
Same thing with the fire building.
Yeah.
Southwestern Community College.
That's one I would probably advocate considering use of fund balance because it's such a smaller, it's one point three million. I don't see going out for fifteen years for one point three million, million to me, it doesn't make sense.
That might be ideal.
That might be an ideal use of fund balance, you know.
Yeah.
What about Macon Middle School? Have we talked about that piece?
We haven't really talked about that one. It's gonna be at least three million. I've heard up to five, so I don't know.
What was the best interest, we got three point?
We got three, four, didn't we?
Pretty good.
It was a good decent rate. Um I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
But was that that good interest rate, I think I just heard you say that that's based on our good fund balance.
Our good financial position overall. They look at fund balance, you know, they look at your
They're looking at how you use the fund balance as well.
Your history, your history of fund balance, how you use it.
So we give an agreement on the one percent, so I'd like to look at that.
I'm I'm okay with that, are y'all okay? I think Paul said, yeah, he said
So your recommendation
We got a nod, head nod from everybody.
Was that a one percent cola, Ronnie? Because you also said something about the appreciation bonus.
Well, I said the Christmas bonus.
Appreciation bonus.
Appreciation, I'm sorry, appreciation bonus. I just mentioned that because that does combine, I mean, it would still stay in place.
Okay.
Because it's in the budget.
I didn't know if you were advocating to increase it.
No, no, no.
And the cola or just
No, just just leave it in the budget the way it is and 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 just a one percent, which would be two hundred thousand, right?
Can see if Derek and Lori can find that, that works.
Well, it sounds like they're gonna get a hundred thousand from the uh special needs analysis.
Possibly.
Possibly.
The number was just based on another county.
Okay.
So we've got to do our own R F B and get it rolling and get our number back, so.
Anyway, okay. Just one thing.
Y'all want to just smoke?
Yes, sir.
So we'll know, I think just going off our dates, Derek, we're looking, we have our normal scheduled meeting uh next Tuesday at six P M. And then we're gonna have our public hearing the following Tuesday.
Yeah, it'll just be, just it will be other business other than budget on the twelfth.
It'll be your twelfth.
Right, no, it'll be around twelve.
Are we gonna have it adopted on the nineteenth?
It
Hopefully.
Yeah, we'll see how
Have the public care in a lot there same thing.
If any stone has been left unturned, we'll we'll keep
That way we don't have to come back the next Tuesday and have a month full of Tuesday meetings.
It is election, remember.
What's that a big?
All right, any further questions? Commissioner Shields?
Thank you, sir.
Bill?
I have none. Till we get to the school, entertain our guest.
Well, uh I'm sorry for the, I apologize, I'm sorry for the confusion uh with this. We uh uh discussed a meeting at five and that's kinda what we reported. And then I think there was uh some memos or some emails sent out. Then we might try and move this forward uh with the Board of Education. Do because we thought we might move through our portion quicker than expected, which we did. Uh the problem with that is, is that I've heard that not every member of the Board of Education can be here uh because of work and lack of notice and I, we can't blame them for that, uh because we didn't give y'all any notice, really. So uh I'm happy to, we're happy to wait, uh would be my suggestion. Dr. Baldwin, I any thoughts? Again, I'm I'm suggesting to wait, but if y'all
It's up to you, Dr. Baldwin. You just have three members, I see.
We have some other stuff that this board needs to discuss, but I, we'll probably have to go into closed session regarding property acquisition, but
Commissioner, if I can answer your question.
Sure, yes, sir, yes, sir.
I think there were a lot of interested people in terms of our discussion that were planning on being here at five.
Okay.
And also addition, we did have uh two board members I know that were were in the pressure to be at five, so.
Understand, yeah, yeah, definitely not.
Our preference would be, would be to wait until that timeframe.
Okay, definitely not trying to push y'all. Did y'all actually recess a meeting or whatnot till five o'clock today as well?
No, we had just, back when we had had a parent meeting, we met with our liaisons and and that parent meeting, I thought it was understood that we were I thought when we talked to boards, we agreed that allow our members' time to get here five o'clock was a better time for the discussion.
I think y'all better wait till five.
Oh, yeah, that'd be much.
Yeah.
I think that was the understanding.
That was in standard, correct.
All right, well, um I'm just gonna suggest then that we go into closed session, discuss property acquisition. Chester?
Motion to go in close session.
Unless there's something else needs to be discussed. You have a motion in the second. Paul in favor?
Aye.
We'll be right back. Ms. Baldwin?
Based on what you said, I'm gonna think so.
All right, we'll call our uh meeting back to order. Uh I have an eye for the obvious, but it looks like our crowd has grown slightly since our three o'clock meeting, so I'd like to welcome all of you in attendance. And I'll just kinda give y'all, uh I'm sure you already know, but I'm gonna overview it again anyway. We received our county manager's recommended budget, I believe on June roughly the thirteenth, second Tuesday and second Tuesday in May. So we basically had a month to digest his budget and for the past, I guess the first thirty minutes since three o'clock, forty-five minutes, we discussed some questions that we had, non-relating to education. And we've been holding all of our education questions until all of you could be in attendance. Uh then we just had a about an hour, a little over an hour, closed session meeting regarding a potential property acquisition. We just came out of that and we're reconvening to have our joint meeting with the Board of Education. So I'd like to again, welcome all of you. Dr. Baldwin, welcome. Board, Mr. Brady Love, welcome to all of y'all and thank y'all for being here. I think that uh, let me rephrase, I I don't think, I know that everyone in this room has a dire interest in education and we all wanna see the best for our kids and there there's no doubt that we all wanna see our children have the appropriate tools and facilities to be successful. I know we have great teachers here. I know a lot of them and I'm I'm thankful for that. I have two children in the Highland School, a high schooler and a middle schooler and I'm blessed every day to hear their stories of the things that they're doing and watching them grow uh educationally and mentally and physically every day. So with that being said, uh I'm gonna pass this off to our liaisons and we'll get this rolling. Just to give you a little history, at our last meeting when the presentation was given, I think there was some immediate questions that came up uh with the the amount of funding uh gonna be provided to Macon County School System. And at that point, our liaisons, uh we're gonna meet with the Board of Education. I think that meeting has taken place and uh this will be the first time this board has heard publicly uh what they've what they've heard and we're we're gonna start our discussion. So with that, Commissioners Bill and Commissioner Shields.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have our liaison committee meeting along with uh Dr. Baldwin and staff and uh finance directors with our, along with county manager. At that meeting, and if, Dr. Baldwin, if you'll come to the podium, please, sir. Just to remind the board, uh in the county manager's budget, he did increase the outlay from seven one to seven three. At that liaison meeting, Dr. Baldwin presented uh from Macon County Schools and the school board, uh the shortfalls that they were going to encounter uh, the shortfalls that they were going to encounter in the upcoming budget year. In front of you, you have that, Dr. Baldwin, do you have that sheet?
Yes, sir.
If you will look, board, at the expenditures, you, if you look at the revenue sheet, and Dr. Baldwin is here to answer any of those questions that you might have. And if you looked at, at the expenditures, and, uh, of course, he can answer those questions much better than Mr. Shields or myself. And we went through these line by line, and Mr. Shields and I and the county manager have also went through these line by line. And if you will, this also has a back page to it, I'd ask you not to, to flip over and look at that also. So, Mr. Baldwin, I would ask that, uh, first of all, there's still a shortfall, board, of basically, when you boil everything down on the, on the expenditure side, it comes down to the teachers, and the shortfall is gonna have on this sheet of, uh, of roughly, if, if you look at the total differences, uh, of about, uh, it says four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, but there's really some other expenditures here, uh, that rounds it up to almost five hundred thousand dollars that were still short, even with the two hundred thousand that the county manager put in his budget. Now, if, if you wanna go line by line, Dr. Baldwin is here, and he can certainly answer those questions along with the, their liaison committee meeting. And, uh, on the teachers, uh, if you, if you kept up and, and been reading, uh, the shortage on the teachers, and I will throw this out there, Dr. Baldwin, in reading the budget from the legislature, and you, you've also read what little we can read and what we can understand. I see nothing in that budget that will be more, that would benefit the shortfalls that are listed on this sheet, right or wrong?
That's correct.
So, basically, board, what you see here are the shortfalls in the, still in the budget for the Macon County School System for this upcoming year, and it's roughly, it, it's right at five hundred thousand dollars. So with that, Dr. Baldwin, I would ask that, that, uh, you add a comment to what, to our meeting, and how we come up with that, and, and any of these numbers do you like to clarify?
Okay.
And Mr. Shields, you wanna add to that, too?
Hearing your comments, just wanna make sure we're at the maintaining level, there's no...
Right.
We're trying to survive.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, just to, just to add to what you said, Mr. Bill, in two thousand eighteen nineteen, you can see that our projected revenues are eight point three million dollars. That's in the two thousand eighteen nineteen column, uh, under revenues, about halfway down the first, uh, side of the page. If you flip over to the back, you see that our, uh, expenditures, um, and the budget that we presented are eight point eight million, and that would be to maintain our current level of service. Now, that's a difference of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine to be exact. What we've done is gone through, and this is just a preliminary, um, run-through. The board has not approved any of these reductions that I have outlined here in red. I just simply went through the line items and, and looked at areas that we could possibly cut. That is by no means the only places that we could cut, uh, or, or for consideration. Of those, PRC oh oh one, three teaching positions, that would eliminate, uh, reduce our expenditures by a hundred and fifty thousand. If we eliminated digital textbooks...
Yeah, I'm, it's right here, Paul.
Red?
Yeah, here. My classroom teacher, yeah, what were your numbers again on that?
Three, three.
Roughly fifty thousand per, so three teachers, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Salary and benefits.
Four...
Salary and benefits cost us about fifty thousand. So a hundred and fifty thousand, that's three positions.
You're gonna lose those.
We would reduce those expenditures.
You, you're talking about reducing the position or the, an actual teaching, a person?
Well, what we'd do is hopefully, we'd have three positions that would, folks would retire or leave the system over the summer, and we would not replace those three positions. Now, if three positions don't leave over the summer, then we'd have to consider eliminating someone.
And these are not, these are locally funded positions?
Correct.
They're not state?
Correct.
And just to clarify for everybody, how does the state determine what is a funded position?
The state allot's us...
Number wise?
The state allot's us, um, in two thousand seventeen eighteen, the state allotted us two hundred point five positions, based on our ADM. Um, and that's at, um, one teacher for every eighteen kindergarten students and so on. So two hundred point five, and we have right now about twenty-one locally paid teachers. So we could eliminate three of those positions and reduce our expenditures by a hundred and fifty thousand. We could also, I mean, you know, with the twenty-one, we could theoretically eliminate twenty-one positions and save one point two million.
Yeah.
So, uh, three is a, a number that, um, you know, that's as far as I would be comfortable going. Any further than that, we're gonna be in some real desperate situations, which is not to say that we're not pretty desperate right now. I mean, we've already lost art and music at, at middle school and positions like that.
And then there are other locally funded positions within the school system?
That's correct.
Other than teachers?
That's correct.
Being...
You can have locally funded maintenance workers, locally funded custodians, clerical workers. We try to keep most of our, uh, custodians on state. Angie basically plays a shell game against those folks on state, because, um, if there is a workman's comp case, the state would pick up the workman's comp. If they're on local, we'd have to pick that up, so we try to keep custodians on state, uh, receptionists on local. But you could pay for either one of those out of state.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Um, next, technology, eliminate forty-five thousand dollars from technology, which would basically be digital textbooks. We could also reduce, uh, our teacher assistant expenditures. Right now, we're funding about a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars of our teacher assistant expenditure out of local. We could reduce that by thirty-two thousand dollars by, uh, taking two full-time positions and reducing those to part-time. And again, that would be through attrition, not, not outright reducing someone's pay, unless it came down to it and we had to.
Chris, hold right there while you're on that one. Uh, why does that number increase from seventeen to nineteen?
From seventeen to nineteen, um, two reasons. First of all, with the class size law, we had to add additional K-three classrooms. I think one was at Highlands and one was at Olive Valley.
I think we had more students, and we ended up having to have an extra, um, whole class, so we had to have an assistant. Our kindergarten raised last year, and, um, we had our preschool teachers also come in with concerns with our classes being together. They're large, and then they all had concerns.
So, I, I guess what, what I'm seeing up there is that you're, what you, what you want that number to be is a hundred and eighty-three thousand, if you reduce.
No, sir.
Or do you want it to be?
Our budget is...
You want it to be one fifty-one, but you can potentially reduce it.
Well, we would, we would have to reduce it.
You would have to?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm with you.
Yeah. So, take two full-time and reduce those to part-time.
Okay.
Uh, instructional supplies, right now, we, we provide, uh, the teachers in Macon County through our local funding, about a hundred thousand dollars for instructional supplies. We could reduce that by fifty thousand, and what we do with, uh, determining how those instructional supply monies go out, we take a base for each school and then provide an ADM allotment. But we could reduce that by fifty thousand dollars, reduce expenditures by that amount. Uh, transportation, um, we could reduce fifty thousand dollars, actually, that, this wouldn't be a reduction in expenditures. What we would do, uh, for consideration is, uh, charge fifty-five cents per mile for, uh, activity bus travel. Generate about forty-five thousand, one hundred dollars, based on an eighty-two thousand mile, um, travel for our activity buses last year. We'd still need to find about five thousand dollar reduction somewhere in transportation, but that would be one way to make up, um, a fifty thousand dollar, actually, revenue, rather than an expenditure reduction.
Is that instructional or athletics, or both of them?
That would be any time the activity buses roll, they'd be charged fifty-five cents per mile.
Each child?
No, the activity bus. If it, if it ride, if it moves, we charge fifty-five cents per mile, travel. It would be, it would be for the field trip, it would be for whatever athletic participation, um...
Would the students have to make a contribution towards that?
Well, that's not been determined. It's possible that, that, that could come from, uh, student fees, it's possible that we could charge, um, the athletic department. It's possible that we charge the, um, the field trip, the class, uh, you know, if they do fundraisers, it could come out of that, and it could be a, a simple fee. That's, we haven't gone that far with it. Athletics, um, we could reduce expenditures by forty-three thousand dollars roughly, by eliminating, um, what we pay out for officials. Right now, uh, we pay for half of the cost of officials in our schools. Uh, Macon Middle School, Highlands, and, uh, Nana Hala and Franklin High School. And the other half has to come out of the gate or the athletic department.
Chris, I know you explained that to me, but could you also, uh, so, we, Highlands and Nana Hala was having a hard time getting by with that cut you made on us before. We, we just, just never...
Well, at, back in, back in twelve thirteen, we actually eliminated that completely.
Yeah, and then, I, I remember, I came back to you, and I, I think I...
We did bring back part of it.
I thanked you for that, because our athletics was having a hard time with that. So, I'm just asking, you're saying that you could do that, but, so we would just be back in our same boat with not being able to possibly...
We would have to come up with the funds some other way than the local appropriation.
Okay, I'm just, I know you tried to explain it to me, I'm just trying to make sure I understand, because I know it was an issue for us.
Sure.
How does your non-revenue sport pick up slack in paying referees?
That would have, that would be something that we would have to do, either through, um, the athletic department at each school. Um, obviously, at Franklin High School, it's probably gonna come out of the football gate, uh, more than it already is. Um, Nana Hala and Highlands, um, is gonna have a tough time.
I believe I was on the school board when we had that discussion.
Macon Middle School as well. Um, forty-two, the other remaining part of that forty-three thousand is also pool rental and field maintenance. There's about thirteen thousand dollars of field maintenance fertilizer and, and that paint and that sort of thing that we'd have to come up with some other way. Board expenses, we pay, um, when a lot of this, uh, school safety came up a few years ago, and, and we felt like, you know, we appreciate the SROs that we have, and in, in order to encourage and to, um, recognize them for the services that they provide, we provide lunches for any law enforcement, um, through our schools. And that's, those are the only folks that eat in our school cafeterias, and we fund those. Teachers pa, pay their lunches, um, administrators, custodians, they all pay their lunches, but we provide the lunches for our law enforcement, because we appreciate their, um, presence on our campus.
But we'd lose that.
That's one option. Thirty-seven hundred dollars there, I threw in my traveling cellphone. I don't want to eat one of them. Uh, ninety-seven hundred was, uh, tr, uh, travel for principals. And then we'd also, uh, an option would be to reduce maintenance budget by fifty thousand dollars. And that's general maintenance, um, for schools, like if a doorknob breaks, or if Tracy has to replace a window, or something like that. That's a two hundred thousand dollar allotment, we would reduce that to a hundred and fifty.
Back to central services, uh, Chris, uh, your, your, your proposed ninety-seven hundred dollar cut brings it down to sixty-one?
No, it would be a, a cut from sixty-one thousand.
Down, and then that's quite a ret, that's quite a jump.
From twenty-six?
From the...
Previous year.
Twenty-six, what, what changes?
Um...
Just for principal travel?
That, that ninety-seven hundred dollars is principal travel. Part of that jump, Angie, do you wanna?
We moved some things around from, um, at one time, we had uniforms for the whole district. We, we purchased uniforms and rented uniforms for our custodians at the schools, and we had those in eight oh six. We moved those to eight oh seven and divvied out, so you can see where, um, eight oh six decreased, and that was just some moving around of some line items that we had to categories that it seemed more effective to put them in that particular category. So it's not, it's not really a change, it's just some shifting around.
What about your steel toe boots, are they still...
They're still in there.
In other words, that's central...
That's about a thousand dollars.
I felt like that, um, the, uh, what did you, what was the cut you moved over there, or the?
Uniforms.
Uniforms. I felt like uniforms didn't belong in central office expense, it, it belonged in central services.
Yeah, this is the first time I've seen this, and I'm having a...
Sure.
Trying to, uh, so I don't mean to ask a lot of questions, gonna delay us getting home for supper, my grand youngins are waiting on me. But, let's go through it.
Okay, and then, um, the fifty thousand dollar reduction and the two hundred thousand dollar general maintenance budget?
Back up before we flip the page there on non-instructural support, uh...
Non-instructural.
Hit that just a minute, yeah, oh three.
Oh oh three?
Yeah.
Um, non-instructural support, that's, that's the line item that we fund our substitutes, our, uh, clerical workers. Is that right? And custodians.
Eight jumps.
Part of the reason for that jump is when the, uh, state enacted the K-three legislation, they also took away some of Angie's flexibility to move those pots of money around, specifically ESL and AIG. Um, we receive a pot of money for, uh, those two educational purposes. English as second language learners and our gifted students. Now, when we received that pot of money, what she was able to do previously was to move that, those dollars into PRC, or actually into PRC oh oh three, which is to pay for the custodians and receptionists. Then she would pay for the ESL teachers and the AIG teachers out of oh oh one, which is a position allotment. Now, the reason that's important is because those ESL teachers and those AIG teachers are generally your most experienced teachers, and they're your more certified teachers. They have, um, master's degrees and that sort of thing, they're more likely to, to be higher paid. So if she puts them on the position allotment, she could hire five, uh, PRC oh oh ones at fifty thousand dollars per. If she has to use those dollars strictly for ESL and AIG, then that means that more of our ESL teachers and our AIG teachers are gonna have to be picked up out of local, or we're gonna have to reduce those teachers. And it also means that if we have to keep that money in ESL and AIG, we don't have as much money to put into PRC oh oh three and pay for custodians.
And principals or assistant principals are not part of that non-instructural support?
Not part of the non-instructural support.
Oh three.
They're oh five.
Oh oh five.
So we're only funding one, or partial, partial one principal? A percentage of a...
Correct.
How many prin, you got, what, eleven principals?
We have eleven, uh, principals, and, uh, how many assistant principals?
I think there's eight.
And four of those, um, we don't have the state funding to provide for four of those, so some of those come out of actually for, uh, PRC oh oh one.
Okay, and then how many assistant principals is there?
There's eight.
There's actually five assistants and two lead teachers.
So seven.
Seven.
Good information, just picking your brain.
Sure.
Chris, it's, uh, um, it's obvious that, I mean, last year you used a fund balance appropriation to, uh, make your ends meet. Uh, and I, I'm definitely a supporter, I think that you need a fund balance. I know that we're your dire emergency backup at the county level, but I think it's also important for y'all to have some funds where you don't have to necessarily come ask us for money. Uh, what, after you, you completed that, how much will this leave in your fund balance?
Angie, can update that, the, the last projection that we had was about nine hundred thousand dollars total, six hundred thousand dollars that we can actually lay our hands on, three hundred thousand is in, uh, Medicaid, um, pre-K, summer adventure camp, VIP, those sort of things. Angie, is that pretty much staying the same?
This, this may be a question you can't answer, but I'm, I'm gonna try it anyway. You've obviously been able to build up a fund balance in the past. How is that, or, or, does that come from state funding or our funding, or a combination of both, or...
It comes from, uh, fund balance is totally locally funded, and it, it's...
Okay.
What, what that means is, um, we can't build fund balance off state dollars. So in order for us to build a fund balance, we have to reduce positions, um, or you have to give us more...
Sure.
Than our expenditures.
Sure.
So when you move through all of those, uh, the possible reductions of expenditures that I've mentioned, uh, that leaves us, uh, still about thirty-nine thousand dollars that we're looking for. that leaves us still about thirty-nine thousand dollars that we're looking for. So, if we do all of those reductions, we're still about forty thousand dollars short.
Mr. Chairman, I may add to the fund balance question. You know, it fluctuates. If you remember, the legislature at one time was going to do a way of the driver's ed. It goes back several years. It goes, you know, and we put money into that, if you remember Dr. Baldwin. But at the end of the day, we talk about percentages of fund balance, and I agree, an institution like Macon County Schools needs a fund balance. Well, if you want to go percentage wise, six hundred thousand is what they can use. That's one point five percent of the total budget.
It's a month's pay though, too, right?
Month payroll.
Barely.
Yeah, that would wipe it out.
Barely, so, so that was, and that played a lot into our discussions on the recommendations that were, that Mr. Shields and I talked about with the county manager and meeting with the liaison committee, that one point five percent of the fund balance. And I think we all agree that Macon County Schools needs a fund balance, and that one point five percent is not a whole lot for a fund balance. So, that played a part into it now. And during our discussions, and if you look at the sheet, we talked about a lot of things, you know, that Macon County has invested, you know, over the past years, few years, close to fifty million dollars in new schools to Macon County, which is wonderful, and we're glad to do that and glad we have. But in doing all that, and Mr. Shields can certainly speak for himself, and I want him to, but we think, I think, and Mr. Shields can agree, and I think Mr. Shields agrees, that it's also time we make the school system whole in their, in their funding for two reasons. Number one, this is what it takes for them to operate. And you can go back through and you can look through everything that Angie's got in her lap. You can go back through all those numbers and you can sit and go through all the numbers. And our, we've got a great relationship with the school board, and we can crunch all the numbers and get down to nitty gritty. But at the end of the day, when we've invested fifty million dollars to provide the children of Macon County a good school system, we need to be able, this is the new norm in school funding. This is what the legislature's put to us, and this is the new norm. The county's either going to have to fund it, or you're going to lose, or we're going to be backing up, Dr. Baldwin. This is my opinion, and this is where we're at.
No, I mean, that's, without the revenues, this, these cuts will have to be made or similar cuts will have to be made.
And this is just where we're at, Mr. Chairman. This is either we fund, you know, and yes, we can pick this, we can go down through it and say, well, we can cut this or we can cut that. But at the end of the day, and we've sat here for years and tried to... But in my opinion, and me and Mr. Shields has talked about it, and I want Mr. Shields to speak to it too, that at the end of the day, this is going to be the new norm in funding schools. We all know that, sitting here, so...
Just add what you said about fund balance, Mr. Beal. If you go back to oh eight, oh nine, two thousand nine, ten, Macon County Schools had about a three million dollar fund balance. And had we not had that fund balance, I don't know how we would have made it through the recession as well as we did. I know the county stepped in in two thousand twelve, thirteen, I think it was. At that time, our fund balance had dipped to two hundred seventy-nine thousand. We had to make significant cuts along with an infusion from the county. We made those cuts, then the teacher assistant cut was supposed to happen from the state driver's ed. Our fund balance went back up because those things didn't happen. Now, we've been having to utilize fund balance for the last couple of years, and it's down to the point where we can't use anymore. My concern now, though, is that, you know, I'm not an economist, but I'm old enough now that I know that the economy's cyclical. And right now, we're trending up, and at some point, we're going to trend down, and our fund balance is not in a position where it's going to be able to help us very much.
What would you, in your opinion, what would your recommended fund balance be? Not, not a percentage, but just a quantity.
You know, I've, we've talked to auditors, looked at the LGC, what they recommend. I've looked at other school systems, you know, I've talked to former superintendents, Mr. Crawford particularly, you know, and what Mr. Crawford said that he tried to always do is keep five hundred thousand dollars in appropriated and five hundred thousand in unappropriated, which would be over a million dollars in total fund balance. You know, we're obviously not there, and that was eighteen years ago. But, you know, the budget was probably not quite half what it is now.
But now, this board, or they sort of serve as a quasi-fund balance, you know. I mean, when you all get in bind, and we appreciate, as Ronnie said, the working relationship, which I love like the Highlands Gym, you know. I mean, we're there as a backup.
And that's accurate, and we appreciate that relationship.
The HVAC, that vocational building, the addition to the supplement, you know, last year. Those are things that this board has been willing and other boards previously to step in and say, hey, we know your fund balance is hurting.
And I agree with you and I appreciate that. I would, I would say that the only real difference in what we're looking at with a fund balance when we talk about a school system as opposed to the county, what we have to look at with the school system is that, is that payroll. And we never know for sure what the state's going to do. We've had revisions, reversions from the state, you know, throughout the school year that we may have to pick up several positions. Angie, you want to speak to some of the reversions that we were having there in the late oh eight, oh nine, ten, eleven, and twelve? I mean, sometimes there's eight hundred thousand dollars.
Eight hundred dollars a pop. Those are lessened now.
They, they don't exist right now.
Yeah.
But they, that's something that can happen in an economic downturn. So, that's, we would use our fund balance for payroll is, is the big issue of our concern.
And that's one of the reasons for a fund balance.
Correct, especially for a school system.
Or, yeah, for the emergency.
Mr. Shields? I think the august thing here is we're trying to maintain.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That's sad, that we don't have, we hope the state can help us in the expansion part of it. And I've spoken to you about this. My greatest concern is we haven't passed a budget, we will on the nineteenth. You've got a hiring freeze on. When people graduated from Western Carolina University, what, two or three weekends ago? On Monday morning, they didn't come across Calwee, they went across Mossom. It is so hard for a principal to hire qualified or quality people waiting this late. So, and it's our responsibility to get your needs there. And you may be going on through this, I don't want us to leave without talking about capital outlay, okay?
Do you all have a copy of that capital outlay request? Are there any questions before we move on into that?
Well, no, we want to stay with this just a second. The recommendation from the liaison committee. To show them what this liaison committee is requesting from this board is that we do make the school budget whole. And to make that whole, what we're requesting is, is five hundred thousand dollars.
Current expense.
It's a current expense, and that will make this budget whole as we move forward. Now, let's talk about, while we're on that, we can have that discussion of where that money's going to come from and how we're going to do that. We are making that recommendation that makes this budget whole, that makes them... And I assure you that when Chris comes back next year, we hope that he can add to the fund balance, but he don't know that, we don't know that. But that is going to be the recommendation. With Shields, if you want to speak to that recommendation, please do so.
For the current expense, or you told me the capital outlay?
The current expense.
Well, as I said there a while ago, we're feeling minimal, we're maintaining.
Maintaining current level services.
The funds that we're, the liaison is going to recommend to this board here is five hundred thousand to cover you. It really is bringing you up to minimal. And that's what we were recommending to this board here for current expense, five hundred thousand dollars.
We appreciate that.
Now, we'll move on and talk about the capital outlay. And this was brought up after that discussion. And, and we just went directly, we didn't, we just went directly to capital outlay. We, and I asked the question, because it's what's on everybody's mind, was the safety and security issue. And that's what we centered on, and it was brought up by this, this side of the liaison committee, not that side of the liaison committee. And we talked about the safety and security. And if you don't think it's important, if you just review what happened last week, it's very important. So, we talked about it and what was necessary for what the schools really needed. And I asked the superintendent at that time, you know, if, you know, what, if you had some extra money, what would he put it to in safety and security? Because that's what's on the mind of every teacher that wakes up. What's on this man's mind, that's his responsibility at the end of the day. Dr. Baldwin, I'm sorry, but it is. I mean, we could sit and talk about it all day, but you all wake up, it's on your mind. And Jimmy and people that has kids in school, and... So, we centered on safety and security. We talked about all those items you see listed there. And what this liaison committee came up with, along with discussions with the liaison committee, Sherman Breedlove and Dr. Baldwin, and, and the board members are Mr. Goldsmith, Mr. Cave. And we had that discussion. And so, what this liaison committee is also going to recommend is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for safety and security to the school system to be used where they see is, because they've, they've got, they've had some personnel and some, some security experts and along with the sheriff, they've been very involved. Macon County Sheriff's Department is very involved. And to spend where they think is very necessary. I mean, we were at, at the middle grade school looking at their cameras. And Carl has educated me on camera more than everyone has known, but, but it's, they're old cameras and I can't see too good anyway without my Walmart, but they're awful, they're terrible. And they just, you know, and I know cameras is not the question. We don't know what answers to all this security stuff is, Dr. Baldwin, but we do know we need to do some things. We all agree, you agree, we all agreed that day. So, Mr. Shields, if you want to speak to that, since we brought it up.
The, having the opportunity to serve on your school security committee, recently, it was definitely an eye-opener in Union Academy. Union Academy is probably one of your most secure schools in Macon County. Whether it's a positive or negative, the intruder allowed us to see our strengths and weaknesses. And we've been there to look at the weaknesses part.
Certainly, thank goodness for the SRO we had down there.
Definitely, and life-saving. And so, then tomorrow morning, we're meeting at Franklin High School. I think one of the things we've talked about, we need to quit talking and do things where people can visually see what we're doing. And I think the, the high school tomorrow will be a...
Yeah, and, you know, it's a, it's a matter of appearance, but it's also, anything that we do is to buy us a few seconds.
Right.
Hopefully, if we buy a few seconds, we can get kids to safety. The SRO can get in place if there is something. I wish that I could say that everything that we did here would reduce our chances of injury or worse to zero, but it doesn't. All, all we're doing is trying to buy some time.
We have a responsibility as a governing group here to be part of that plan and make sure it gets to be in place, not to make sure, we trust you to do that, but make sure we provide you funds to implement your plan.
And so, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is, and you can speak to the, that's the safety and security and how we came up with that number. We, we tried to devise what we thought would, you know, to bring to this board, Dr. Baldwin, and, and the items we thought would be by your recommendation and the liaison recommendation to bring to this board. So, Mr. Chairman, that's the two recommendations that your liaison committee is bringing to this board. And we know that that's a two big recommendations, we realize that. But we also realize that the safety and security is a big issue, and we think that that's, we think really and truly that, that the safety and security is a, it's almost a must in some of these... And if Mr. Breedlove or Mr. Goldsmith or Mr. Cave or any of them, that was our, during that discussion, want to speak to that, that's fine, they're certainly welcome to. And on the other part, we know that that's a lot of money. But we also had that discussion of that we could feel strongly it's time to make the budget of Macon County school system whole. And we'll take it from there because this is the new, this, we're in the new age.
New norm.
It's a new norm for funding of the school systems, and it's time to realize that. We've always hoped that they'd do this or do that, the state would do this or do that. Well, it ain't happened. Is that in the real word, yes it is? So, this is where we're at, and that's the recommendation for this liaison committee.
So, so the recommendation would be the current expense allocation would be seven, eight, four, five?
Five hundred thousand.
To at...
At four eighty, uh...
That's right.
Four seventy-eight.
That's exactly right.
Four seventy-eight, two six nine, and we rounded off to five hundred thousand. That's...
Because there's a burnt bus. There's a burnt bus with eight thousand dollars you're going to get. We understand it, you know, you're going to get eight grand for the bus.
The insurance, but we do get to put it up for bid.
We can sell the motor maybe, that's another, what, fifteen dollars or something? I mean...
Did you have a question about that? Was there a question?
No, I was just, that, just clarifying, just to make sure I understood.
Okay, then the, the two point five, two hundred and two thousand for your capital outlay?
About the eight fifty?
The earmark for safety and security.
The two fifty.
The two fifty, and that's the two recommendations.
So, out of, out of your recommendation, I'm sorry, we're a little slow on this. This is the first time three of us have seen these outlays tonight, so we're digesting this. So, of the, Chris, of the, so we're saying you're basically have a capital outlay request of three point one seven nine?
Yes, sir.
And we're suggesting eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
Of the three point one, so less than about twenty-five percent of what it is.
Well, and, and we had that discussion. And, and what we said of these, of these items, we know we can't do it all. And, and at one time, we can't, it's one bite at a time.
Sure, I wish we had the checks.
I wish we had, but, and so, we, we centered on the safety and security out of all these things. And knowing that if Tracy comes to us and needs, and needs that something on, on maintenance, this board, I don't think, since I've been here, has ever refused. It's something, it's something, we've got to fix it. If it's cold, we've got to heat it, if it's too hot, we've got to cool it. So, so, but the safety and security is, has always been on somebody's mind, but never to the extent it is today. So, that's where we centered it at, and that's where, and we picked items that we thought was most important. Right, Dr. Baldwin?
Yes, sir.
That's where we come up.
So, Ronnie, I'm a little bit confused.
Yep, capital's eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Period? Of which, two hundred and fifty is...
You're doing the two, you're doing the six hundred thousand plus two hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah, you've got, yes, what you're saying.
So, it's eight hundred and fifty thousand.
You're right.
Of the eight hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty is security.
You're right.
Right. And three hundred, or that's six hundred, I believe it's IT, technology, and the other three. So, really, you've got two hundred and fifty and three, three thou, three hundred thousand. But you've got IT that's picking up, you know, it says there in the book that it's three hundred thousand for IT. So, you're correcting your total estimate.
And so, along with that recommendation, what we do is ask between now and, and as soon as we can is, is for the county manager and, and Mr. Baldwin and Angie and Lori to get together and look at every avenue that they can to see if there's anywhere else that, that, any numbers that they can crunch. And I think that, I think they might be somewhere they can find that. But we've tried that over the years, it's not been too successful. But, but I'm asking that, that that be part of it. I think that's just good management. But in the meantime, we'll also ask the county manager, you know, to bring some recommendations back to this board. But in the meantime, uh, we'll also ask the county manager, uh, you know, to bring some recommendations back to this board, uh, on this, uh, on the two recommendations to give this board opportunity to discuss it.
Jared, last year, wasn't it three hundred thousand for IT?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. And I was just noticing up here, it's six eighteen, eight seventy-four to get it on the five and seven-year replacements. So, we funded three hundred last year, so we're taking it, doubling it, and then we're funding it at three hundred again this year. So, we're, we're taking kindergartners, and they're going to have the same computer when they graduate from high school.
You're probably right. And on that three hundred thousand, I mean, it's, Laurie will have to speak up to that. A few years ago, we were trying to keep, uh...
He got one point five.
We borrowed a million and a half dollars.
And then all those computers already ate it out, so that's, that's all.
Now, Tim, in his budget, I think, has one point, how much begin, Tim?
Um, say that again, I'm sorry.
How much is in your total IT budget?
Uh, well, the current, the capital outlay budget is, should be about six hundred and eighteen thousand. That's what takes to be on a, a five-year refresh.
But your, your current expense is seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and seventy?
Yes, we can tell for our...
We've got it right here. Um, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars is the current expense, and then you had three hundred thousand in the capital outlay.
About one point one million, I think.
And then the state, what is the state's allocation for that line item?
For technology?
Yeah, technology.
Technology, we get about thirty thousand dollars a year out of state. If we're lucky, that's times of four quarters.
You can turn them on.
Yeah, we get about sixteen thousand plus five of four quarters, and that's, that's pretty good, about thirty thousand dollars.
Does any of the E-rate go to that background?
It does, and, uh, E-rate, um, if you'll notice there, uh, it's got a minus, the E-rate match, um, right there on that same line item, is that the total is on, twenty-five thousand. It's not, and how much do we have in E-rate last year, and it's running out this year?
Well, we only applied for, um, we only applied for E-rate for, uh, phones and internet in the past. Uh, we were hoping to apply for E-rate for, uh, internal connections with your switches and routers and things of that nature. Uh, they would pay for about eighty percent of those devices, um, which is, um...
Twenty-five thousand.
Uh, yeah, about twenty-five thousand, eighteen thousand, and thirty-six thousand, no, I'm sorry. Eighteen thousand and twenty-five thousand, I'm sorry. That's what we would, uh, that, that's twenty percent of the total cost of the switches and routers. So, that's our cost. E-rate would cover the rest of that, or, or eighty percent on top of that amount.
So, so twenty-five thousand plus eighteen thousand?
Forty-three.
Forty-three thousand is the twenty percent.
That's the twenty percent portion, yeah.
And by doing that, that frees up local capital money that could have previously been, that you would have had to use to replace those switches and routers.
Right.
That can now be used towards computer replacement.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, yeah, thank you.
To get from three hundred thousand to six eighteen with forty-three thousand.
But forty-three thousand is only twenty percent. The other eighty percent, which they would be getting from E-rate funding, is...
How much was our total E-rate last year?
We, we didn't apply for E-rate, yeah. That was for the previous year. That was, that was, uh, revenue from previous year.
Two hundred and four thousand.
No, I, I, how much was our E-rate?
Twenty-two thousand.
No, that, that's, that's something different than what we're talking about.
So, so, but, but we're still on the same page, though, with what we had, with...
It would cost us two hundred and forty-three, yeah.
Forty thousand, if you had not have got that grant. Now you're going to have that grant, so that money is essentially eighty percent grant-funded, which can now be used toward replacing about two hundred and four thousand.
But I won't be able to apply for those if, if we don't get the full funding. I mean, I won't, I won't buy those switches and, and...
So, that, there again, that's where the full funding would help YouTube.
Right, exactly, yeah. Uh, the other E-rate that we get is for inter, uh, for internet connections, and that is gone. That's no longer applicable towards phones and internet services. So, we're, we didn't apply for it this year, and we won't get it next year. That showed up as a revenue on our current expense in previous years, and, and that funding's gone. So, we're picking that up out of local. That's another thing that's costing us more money out of local, that E-rate used to supply.
Tim, can I ask you to clarify for Carl's questions, and I ask you one thing. The thing what Carl was saying is, the six eighteen, after every, all everything's considered, six eighteen puts us on the five-year refresh to maintain our technology for the students.
Right.
All of that, in fact, taking into account, E-rate, whatever it is, the question is, that's what it would take to keep a five-year refresh with everything else accounted for? So, I think that's what your question is.
And we would also have to apply for E-rate for that other, like, two hundred and forty-some thousand.
But once that, once that E-rate's applied for, that other two hundred and forty thousand, if he gets that money and can use that capital money to replace switches and routers, then that two hundred and forty thousand is essentially free to, then can go, combined with the three hundred thousand dollar local funding for computer replacement.
Um, no, um, no, that's on top. We would, we would need, um, eight hundred and some thousand to do what we're asking.
We, we, we budgeted, E-rate is revenues.
Yeah. So, this, this is just our twenty percent of the cost, and that's included in the six hundred and eighteen thousand. If we wanted to actually put those switches and routers and, and things on a five-year refresh, it would cost us two hundred and forty-three thousand, of which forty-three thousand is what it would cost the county or cost us, which is included in the six hundred, so, makes sense.
Yeah. And, and what, going back to Ronnie's question, your total budget is what?
Um...
One point?
One million fifty-seven thousand.
Pardon?
One million fifty-seven thousand.
Okay, and the county IT budget is?
One million fifty-four thousand, when you take out the half a million dollars in capital expenses.
So, their capital's in this too. Right. So, it'll be one, one five. Cat, the county totals be one five?
Yeah.
Okay. And how many employees does the county got?
We got eight ITs.
No, how many employees total?
Three hundred and sixty.
Okay, and the county's, the school board's got, how many?
Uh, we've got about three hundred and forty classroom teachers, um, six hundred employees, but that, that would include bus drivers and cafeteria workers.
I was just trying to, for like, so we're six hundred employees to one point?
A million fifty-seven thousand would be what we budget this year.
Three, what'd you say, three what? To one point five, okay.
You mean, you know, what, fifteen departments?
Fifteen departments, you're running, you're talking about running the NCFAST system, the health department system.
How many students do we have, Dr. Baldwin? I mean, the students are the ones that have the technology, and then...
We've got, we've got forty, between forty-four and forty-five million students.
I mean, that's the ones that we're, you know, we're shooting to concentrate on, having the right technology. They're going to be on the place, yeah, correct?
That's good, that's good.
NCFAST, let's take it nine million dollars, just load up the engine.
Paul, any questions?
What?
Paul, are you finished? Sorry, I'm in a gentle.
No, I just had a couple of comments before we close it out. I mean, I think a little, is this, you're...
I was going to get the questions, and I was going to give us a little solid comment.
Okay, no, I'll comment.
I've got a couple of comments when we get through.
All right, well, are there any further comments? Commissioner Shields, any further questions?
I was trying to find something from the state that they delotted. Uh, and I couldn't remember some of it, IT, or what it was for, Mr. Bill, I don't have a look at it today. We're tier one. You got...
The state has a lot of twelve million dollars in particular, invited up in the tier, in all three counties, one, two, and three. When we do, when you break it all down, and, and there's a formula for that, we'd ended up with, I think, uh, about twelve thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. If it's a tier-one county out of twelve million. Two Pepsi's and a moon pie, so.
Yeah, I got one, so.
That's true.
Yes, sir.
Can I throw out something from a teacher's perspective?
Absolutely.
Y'all are throwing numbers. They're over my head right now. But, uh, let's go back to technology. We're talking about, a lot of this technology is the, the textbook. They're, they're, they're techn, that's technology these days. It wasn't when we went to school. If we don't have enough of those, then in order to teach the classes, this happened two years ago. The, the, the thing with instructional supplies. The teachers, then, if they don't have these computer textbooks for the children, then they have to spend every day after school running off copies on copy machines from their old textbook to hand those things to the kids. Two years ago, the contract, the amount of money we spent for that was over with before Christmas. The, the teachers were, were covering their husbands' offices, every place that they could go to get things, to get copies made out of their own pocket, because we didn't have enough of the technology textbooks, and we didn't have enough instructional supply contra, and money in the contract. So, we added twenty-five thousand dollars more. And we are very, very grateful for the change in the operating expenses you're talking about. But that just goes to show that, that daily operation, how important that is, how these things tie together. You don't have enough textbooks, you better get a whole lot more paper, you, you know? And, and so all these things tie together, and that's why they're so, so important. When Ms. McCall mentioned how many students we have that have to have these things, the technology to operate on now. Okay, thank you for that.
But I also want to say, when I looked at it, the structural supplies, you take that away, teacher, get your pocketbook out, that's what you do. You supplement that. That's what's not right.
All right, Christian Bell?
I think we've, uh, we've covered everything I want to say. Thank you.
Mr. Higgins?
Just comment?
Make some comments, yeah?
Yeah, and thank you, Dr. Baldwin, Angie, or teachers from ever, uh, you know, we, we, like I say, this is the first time we've seen this, so we're going to go through this. And I don't know what I've heard the term fully fund or whole, make whole. I don't know what that term means, because all of our departments in the budget process, well, they'll request a certain amount, and Derek graciously funds what is appropriate for that department. So, I don't know what that term is, but as a graduate of Franklin High School, I'm, I think that kind of gave me a, a, an up in life, went on to college, and, um, someone survived, survived the world based on my education in Macon County, so I'm, I'm very supportive of it. But, you know, we see, we received a lot of emails. There'd been a lot of stuff about education on state level, people going to Raleigh, picking and all this stuff, and at a national level. And, and then we got inundated with quite a few emails here locally. Uh, and it seemed that, uh, the tone of those emails was that we did not, that this board of commissioners or Macon County did not fully support public education. And that was what I took away from these, and I just kind of want to highlight a couple of things of how taxpayer dollars are, are spent that the general public probably doesn't know about as far as education goes. Uh, now, on the state level, I think, you know, and I'm not a state regulator, I don't really think that, but I, I've looked a little bit at their budget, and I think this year, they're throwing another seven hundred million dollar increase into, is, is that still in there?
Um, I, I, I don't know what, what it's going to be right now.
That's proposed, and then, uh, I think, uh, since, what, thirteen, fourteen, there's been about a twenty percent increase at the state level on teacher salaries, which includes a six percent this year or something.
I, that, I understand that that is proposed at this point. I think the General Assembly's passed it, it's on the governor's desk.
For a certain loss of people. For a certain loss, it's not, there's nothing in education and...
Well, and, and just to go back to what y'all were discussing earlier. Uh, I think that a lot of times, that increase, and, and no doubt, that dollar does go up every single year, just like y'all's budget goes up every single year. But a lot of it's been eaten up by retirement costs and health benefits, um, just like that's impacted your budget. When you see that seven hundred thousand dollar increase, imagine the increase that y'all had with three hundred and forty employees, with, uh, the employees that we have, state-paid employees in Macon County. Imagine the benefit increase that goes along with those employees. So, when you factor that, that amount in there, you know, that seven hundred thousand dollars may be maintaining what you currently have, and it may not be maintaining it.
Exactly. And there's so much, I don't know how you finance people keep up with all this.
Well, I'm not a finance person, and it's real hard for me.
Angie, if I want to know something about finance, I don't ask any of these guys. I'm going to ask her, or if I only about school, I'll ask Angie. I do not see how the finance departments keep up with, with all this funding and shifting, and it's, it's phenomenal. And I appreciate both finance departments for doing that. But now, locally, we still owe about thirty million dollars. The taxpayers of Macon County are in debt about thirty, about thirty million dollars. The majority of that is for school buildings. In the last ten years, I think, Charlie mentioned it, fifty or sixty million dollars has been put into, to school buildings in Macon County. We still owe thirty million dollars. And each year, we continue to make improvements to existing buildings. I think this, just recently, we're, we just got the bids in on the South Macon expansion. That's about three million dollars. That's going to go in as, as a debt. Uh, we finished what, the QZAB, the Highlands and, uh, Union Academy, that was what? That was...
About three million, yeah.
That was about three million dollars, the votes completed. Uh, replaced the Highlands gym roof that'd been leaking for twelve years. At three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we're not budgeting. And we'd waited so long to replace it, couldn't go after the contractor, couldn't go after the architect. Uh, public education, we just recently, we're going to give one point four million to the Southwestern Community College burn building, public education. Uh, and this year's itemized funding for their current expenses, the supplements, solid waste fees, capital outlay, the golden leaf match funds, and debt services, nine and a half million dollars.
Last year.
Last year.
Seventeen eighteen.
Yeah. Nine and a half million dollars. Uh, SROs, we're one of only four counties in the state, I think, now, somebody correct me, what I should research. One of only four counties in the state that has an SRO in every building, at every school. Two at the high school, I think. So, we've been a little proactive with the prodding of the, with you guys for safety, and I'm glad that we've done that. Uh, so, that's eight hundred thousand dollars a year that's reflected in the sheriff's budget. Uh, child dental health services, a motor roller, that's about a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar per year expense that's reflected in the health department's budget. And that motor roller is a big thing at the schools. I mean, it's, it's, it's big.
Big for teeth.
Pardon?
Big for teeth.
Yeah. Good point, yeah. Uh, school nurses, around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And these are things that we didn't have when I went to school, and I still got out here with good grades. Uh, the school health nurses, around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That's in the health department's budget, that's reflected in, in education. Tobacco education's about thirteen thousand. And, and the total is about eleven point one million dollars is actually, I mean, you can still shift these numbers. It's all in the pencil, but that's what the total education funding from Macon County taxpayers is. Now...
Do you know how much of that's pass-through?
The motor rollers pass-through, several of that things are pass-through.
How much of the capital out, how much of the capital outlay is pass-through?
What do you mean, pass-through?
Well, for, for the Article forty and Article forty-two.
You're saying it's offset by the revenues, it's not really pass-through.
But it's, it, it's state mandated, it has to go for capital outlay, though, isn't it?
Yeah, but I wouldn't call that a pass-through.
What would you call it? How, what, how would you use it?
It's another revenue source. It's offset.
But it has to go for school capital outlay.
It's not county money. I don't know where Paul got his numbers, but I know we've provided a breakdown before, like, of every year, this much has to go from the county general fund for capital outlay, because like you're saying, there's lottery revenues, there's the article sales tax forty and forty-two.
There's also refunds on the Owl and Anahala.
Yes, there's the QZAB.
About three hundred, about four hundred thousand dollars there.
On what?
The, um, QZABs for Anahala and Owl Valley.
But I know when we present...
So, it's about four hundred thousand dollars that...
But that was Owl, not even...
And Anahala.
But when we prepare the budget book, there's that pie chart we do, and it, it takes into account all those outside revenues. We only pick up the general fund portion, so...
Does that come from the, um, North Carolina revenue, from the state, the state, not, not taxpayers here?
Well, the bottom line, it doesn't matter if it's state, local, federal, whatever. It comes from one place, comes off somebody's hip pocket in the form of a tax or a service fee. So, we're, you know, that, I think that's kind of a viewpoint, but, but we do support education. I mean, and, and I think the state's trying to, to support it. Uh...
Well, look, I'll agree with you. It has improved in the last couple, three years from the state side.
Yeah.
It, it, that's for sure.
And we're optimistic.
And, and we appreciate the considerations you're giving us today.
K-12 funding that I think Kevin kind of spearheaded.
Absolutely.
So, they're... So they're chipping away at it.
Yes.
And, and we just gotta be optimistic with it. And in comparison, we've been sitting here earlier today, county employees, we didn't have them down for any raise this year. We hit them with increasing their, their employee insurance contribution, some of them over two thousand dollars. And that's a big hit. Hopefully we're gonna lead, lead in some of that. The county manager presented a pretty tight budget with no tax increase and, and, and to fully fund all of these requests, there would have to be, if we, we fully funded or made whole all the departments that came before us to do this budget, there would have to be a pretty significant tax increase. So I appreciate y'all coming, appreciate tremendously what you do putting this budget, cause your budget's forty-three million?
Uh, no, I think it's about forty million.
I think it's forty-three this year.
Total.
Forty-three, ours is running, lost forty-nine, eighty, it'll probably be over fifty, so that's a lot of money. The taxpayer money is, is where it comes from, that we dispense throughout this county and it takes a lot to run government and educate children. So we appreciate what you all do, we fully trust that you're good stewards of that money as we try to be and we appreciate you taking the time and coming and let, let us digest some of this, but I think it's before this board now. But certainly do appreciate what y'all do, Chris.
Thank you, and anytime any questions come up, Angie and I are on the phone.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Sorry, Chris, a couple more coming.
Paul's, Paul established that, that education can, can cost a lot of money, so I'm not, I'm not gonna go there. And there's no doubt that prior boards, prior to me being here anyhow, there, there have been some serious commitments made to school infrastructure. I think, you know, our, our school reflect that and I, and I think that, that those prior boards should be commended for that because they, they.
Absolutely.
They made a commitment to do that. But fast forward here today, um, you know, first off, I wanna say thank you to you and your staff. Thank you to everyone that, that came out tonight and thank you to, to liaisons who obviously spent a fair amount of time and effort getting, getting this boiled down to one sheet of paper that we could all understand. But I think two, two things that I've heard in these conversations that, that are cause for concern is any of these budget numbers, cuts that, that, that you've proposed that, that, that hopefully we're not gonna go down that road and have further discussions about, but, but those that are, are proposed are not, I don't view them as, as we're trimming a little flat.
No, sir.
Their desperation moves. And, and so it concerns me that, that we're to the point that we are, that, that we're talking about those type of cuts versus some, some cuts that might not be as detrimental to, to the educational process. And then the second concern that, that I have in regards to, to funding, you know, we, we, we're not funding our kids to be prepared necessarily to come back in to the Macon County workforce. Thanks to the internet, the world's flat. And, and, you know, I think, I think that we need to focus on that and focus on measure from the top down, not the bottom up. And, and yes, it's, 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 it's cost a lot of money to do, but I'm not convinced that at the end of the day that it's, that it's not a good investment and one of the best investments that we can make. So, so I just would close by saying thank you to what you do and what our teachers do. Thank you to what our liaisons have done in trying to bring this to, to a close. But I think, I think we need to look at the big picture of, of where we're going, where we wanna go with education and as Ronnie mentioned, the new norm, you know, we, we need to accept the new norm, embrace it and figure out how we're gonna fund those, the schools and fund education at a level so we can compete the local.
Well, and I, you know, I made this comment on that, going back to what Mr. Bill commented and, and the statement you just made. You know, when you talk about competition, what's happened, it, it may have been going on prior to the recession, but I think what's happened since the recession is you've seen certain counties in the state of North Carolina that have taken it upon themselves to really contribute to education in that district. You know, that gap is widening across the state of North Carolina. Certain counties are doing a lot, certain counties are doing much less. And so I appreciate any consideration that you all give to increasing funding in Macon County this year.
I think one thing Carl brought up is that on the Business Advisory Council that you and I serve on, it is most important to them, what, what you're saying, is that educational component fit the economic environment today. And I'm gonna say this, we've had an opportunity to, to go through Franklin High School and look at the CTE program, Career Technical Education, and to be honest about it, those CEOs from all those industries and some laypeople out here, they were really surprised at the quality that the CTE program is, is produced at Franklin High School. And at the state level, you've got our, our skills program, your STEMs program back there. We are doing some things that's best kept secret in town. And, uh, but we're still, those CEOs still trying to develop, get us to think a quality workforce. In two thousand and eight, as a principal, if I had said something, you need to focus more on vocational education, I'd have been run out of Franklin High School. But today I could say it and get by with it. In two thousand and eight, it was promoting four-year colleges, you've gotta go to college, you've gotta go to college. Now we're in that situation where you don't have those people there and we're trying to restart this engine.
Well, that, that's, that's accurate and, and also I think what the CEOs in that business, on that Business Advisory Council saw and what we're seeing a lot from the research now is that there's so much that can be gained from CTE, the CTE program in terms of critical thinking and creativity, problem solving and those sort of things that they learn skills that apply across the curriculum, not just in CTE. We would like to see more kids in CTE and, and improve their ability to perform well in college.
And I see, uh, Carl, I serve on the SEC Board of Trustees and I see Mr. Bell here. Southwestern Community College is in tune with, with our needs and.
Southwestern is a, is a tremendous partner for us.
And I don't know if Dr. Thomas is here, but, uh, Mr. Bell, you can relay the message, they are a quality program.
They're a big part of that CTE program that you spoke about too.
All right, well, I wanna, uh, uh, close this out. I know that there are several of you out there that would like to address the situation and our discussion tonight. A week from today, next Tuesday night at six PM, we will have a public comment period before we start our normal, uh, board meeting. And then the following Tuesday, the following Tuesday, have we set a time for that yet, Derek?
Six PM.
Six PM, so next Tuesday and then the following Tuesday, we're gonna have our public hearing in regards to the budget. So we'll have another public comment period at that time of not only discussing education, but our entire budget. For those of you that missed the first portion of this meeting around a little after three, I'd already made the connotation that our county budget, which you can see up on the screen, it's a little over forty-nine million is, I, I equilated it to being as tight as a banjo string. It kinda twings right now, we feel like it's so tight. So this addition that we're looking at to our budget is gonna probably have to come out of our fund balance, which is the red there. Now, why, why does the, the county have a fund balance? We've talked about why the school needs it, the county needs it for several reasons too. So yes, the county can afford it, pull it out of fund balance. The problem that I'm immediately seeing and the other commissioners are seeing is, is, yeah, we can afford to pay it, but it's not sustainable going on and on, we can't keep on all of that or our piggy bank's gonna disappear. But why do we need a big piggy bank? Well, we're just, we're getting financing for our South Macon school. The better financial condition the county's in, one of those conditions that they analyze is how big our fund balance is, the less our interest rates are. I think we're looking at about a three percent, Lori, roughly, do we know yet?
It's three point four.
Four, what if it was five point four? We're gonna be paying a lot more on that, so the better financial condition, that's one of the things to look at. There's also emergencies, just like the school has, we, we need to have a fund balance. But the point I just wanted to make is, is, uh, uh, this board, just from the comments I heard, obviously wants to, to fund this. We wanna make it happen and I, I got a good feeling that it will happen. We've gotta come together as a board and decide how we make it happen. Do we, do we break that banjo string and tighten it to the point it can't, can't handle it anymore? Or do we pull out of our fund balance knowing that it might not be sustainable in years coming? So do we kick that can down the road and we gotta look at another way of, of revenue stream moving forward? That's a discussion we'll be having, but, um, just to ease all of your tensions just a little bit, just from the, the head nods and the stuff and you've obviously got two liaison committee members that are supporting this that I, I feel pretty confident that this will go through. We just gotta figure out how it's gonna happen. So again, I appreciate all y'all coming. Next Tuesday away from tonight and two Tuesdays, there'll be some public comment period and I'm sure you'll be emailing us and letting us know in the meantime and we're happy to have that, so, all right? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna take a, uh, I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn.
Someone's second.
If you've got a second, all in favor?